All right, good evening, everybody. I'm going to call the meeting to order for Thursday, October 30th at 6:30 PM. Looking for the approval of the agenda? Thank you, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. This will be an open public hearing. I just have a statement to be read and then we can move forward. This public hearing is convened pursuant to Section 890 of the Local Government Act to allow the public to make the representations to council representing matters containing in the following proposed bylaw. One, the Callwood Official Community Plan, Bylaw 999-2008, Amendment Number 7, Bylaw Number 1547-2014, and Callwood Land Use, Bylaw Number 151-1989, Amendment Number 141, Bylaw Number 1548-2014. Every one of you present who believes that your interest in this property is affected by the proposed bylaws shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard or to present written submissions respecting matters containing to this proposed bylaw. None of you will be discouraged or prevented from making your views known. However, it is important that you restrict your remarks to matters contained in the proposed bylaws. When speaking, please commence your remarks by clearly stating your name and address. As well, I'm going to ask that if you choose to speak more than once, that you please allow others to speak before you speak a second time. The function of council at this public hearing is to listen to you rather than to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw. After this public hearing has concluded, council may, without further notice, give whatever effect council believes proper to the representations made at this hearing. As a matter of information, the bylaw is on the agenda for consideration later this evening. Please be reminded that there will be no opportunity...
Mr. Chair, we don't have the bylaws this evening.
Yeah, no. Yeah, I'm not sure why that's written. Sorry, yeah, it's not going to be this evening, is it? Correct. So I'll scrape that last. After this public hearing has concluded, council may, without further notice, give whatever effect council believes proper. It's not going to be before us this evening. But your opportunity to speak to the bylaws during council, you do not have the ability to speak to bylaws during council, so the opportunity is right now. Saying that, we will move to public hearing. So what we're going to do this evening is 3.1 and 3.2. You will have the opportunity to discuss either at the same time. We're not going to do 3.1 and try and restrict peoples to speaking to that one specific, or 3.2, so you can speak to either at any time. So this is your opportunity to share your thoughts. Well, we're done. Good night, everybody. I'm kidding. Whoever wants to be first, somebody come on up and be first.
Hello, do something.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Testing, one, two, three. Want to say that my name is Lloyd Ralph and my address is 27198 Winger Terrace. My name is Lloyd Ralph. My family and I have lived in the Western Community area for over 35 years. I've known B.C. Alta for about 18 years, and they are nothing but a class act. Is there any way I can hold on to this? Yeah, because of my glasses, I can't see what I'm doing. Where was I? B.C. Alta finishes everything that they start. B.C. Alta has worked very hard and has been involved with a number of very large projects throughout Canada and the USA. He's devoted endless hours for the less fortunate, building homes, and dreams for people in both countries, giving them better living and housing conditions. I feel that this development is nothing but a big win-win situation for the residents and the community of Callwood. Once finished, it's estimated to bring in, or will bring in, approximately over $1 million in tax revenues, which is a much-needed revenue for Callwood and its future. Over the past few years, Callwood has been haunted by poor development and planning, which has left too many large holes in the ground, generating nothing but negative disappointment within the community and surrounding areas of Victoria. B.C. Alta, their vision is just brilliant, as he takes care of everyone's needs. He's totally professional, and he has thought this out very carefully. This is not a cookie-cutter project. You have to admit, the pictures and drawings of his vision are definitely clear and speak for themselves, so beautiful and well-planned out with great detail. It's a perfect fit, professionally thought out, and definitely sets the bar for anyone else thinking of developing in the area. Anyone who's lucky enough and chooses to live here will be very proud to say that they live in Callwood. As a community, Callwood cannot afford to stop progress and needs to be supportive of positive growth with developments such as this. This project is going to put Callwood on the map as a leader for now and towards the future. Thank you. Any discussion?
Just kidding. Is there anyone else who would like to share anything?
My name is Paul Cormy. I live on 3425 Mary Ann Crescent. Sure, yeah. Paul Cormy, 3425 Mary Ann Crescent. Conceptually, the plan is good. I agree with some of the sentiments just said. My house is right in the corner of Mary Ann and Cotton Way. I have a small child, so immediately dove into the details of the report. I'd also think the tenants here, I stumbled across this, this plan and the meeting tonight. I mean, I don't regularly look at the agenda on the City Council website, so I do think there's probably a better way to get the message out to people that are affected by stuff like this, just going forward. Specific to this, I'm affected by a couple of things in here, and that's not a bad thing, but I did look at the detail on the plans, and I noticed that they are good, but there's still several voids in the pictures and the designs, specifically the road design. Do you guys have or are you able to provide more information on the road, the topographic layout of the roads, like where you're planning to approve these roads, or where the design goes?
Right now, anything that you ask question-wise, staff are recording, and they can get back to you on it. It's just we're not going to be sort of going back and forth with questions, so feel free to ask the question, but you won't get an answer tonight. What will happen is, Ian, go ahead.
If the folks are interested in answering questions, getting questions answered by staff could see me after the meeting, that'd probably be best.
Yeah, so that's my primary, that's my only question, actually, is where the roads are and how you plan on dealing with the increased traffic volume. So I guess that question is to you.
Staff will take care of the question, either myself or the Director of Engineering.
Thank you.
I'm not as tall. Good evening, council. Thank you for letting me speak. My name's Wendy Tyrell. I am, I live at 4208 Morris Drive in Sanich. I'm here representing Habitat Acquisition Trust. I'm the Covenants and Acquisitions Coordinator for a local regional land trust that we have here in Victoria. As most of you probably know, Havenwood Park, which is Callwood and Langford Park, borders a significant portion of the development that these bylaws that are being looked at for amendment are considering. So we've looked at the development when it was first proposed. We sent a letter, which I believe council has read, May 23rd, 2014. Is that true? So this is en file. Okay, great. I want to quote just one portion of that from our Executive Director, Adam Taylor, who wrote the letter. "We strongly believe that the development of a large-scale residential complex such as proposed would greatly compromise the ecological integrity of Havenwood Park along its northern boundary. As shown in the proposed plans, the commercial and residential areas would remove over half to two-thirds of the natural forest lands that currently buffer Havenwood Park." This would, right now, this provides an amazing buffer, and clearing the section of the forest would significantly impact a very large portion of Havenwood Park, which is, since it's under Conservation Covenant, which is unusual for a municipal park, this park is protected in perpetuity. So to get into some, a couple of specifics on why that would be reduced, I think the biggest one, the Arborist's report points out very clearly that those trees that are along the edge, so if it's clear-cut as proposed up to the edge of Havenwood Park in a lot of areas along that boundary, you're going to open up a new edge to Havenwood Park. So we're looking at five, maybe 10 acres of damage going in right there. You're going to change the structure of the park. You're going to change the exposure, wind exposure, sunlight exposure, which is going to change ecological, ecological change to the park. The Arborist also, which I'm sure is also en file, quotes that, interestingly, that a lot of the trees are going to be removed from the easternmost portion of the subject property. The plan that I'm looking at, it's interesting that the green spaces all run vertical, and if you see these green spaces that are connected to Havenwood down below, they're not providing any haven for the park itself, pardon the pun. So as laid out, the impact is significant, and it will change a park quite significantly. The proposal itself, whether it's developed or not, is not of our opinion. However, I could see, as the Arborist also pointed out, they may have to look at a different setup. Why the parkland isn't the developed, parkland set aside for the development, isn't focused on that natural boundary makes no sense. So right now, all the parkland is vertical. It doesn't buffer or protect this natural space of Havenwood Park, and so what you have is a fragmented ecology of land that would be fairly meaningless for habitat, for wildlife, for any type of corridor. So as it stands, that, you know, makes no sense in a development that is protecting open space, green space. It's pretty wasted on that. So I've talked about the edge effect. Another big problem would be the hazard trees that will be created now that new development will be buffering the park all along its northern boundary. We will now have hazard trees that are going to be potentially creating hazard to those new properties. We also have fire buffer concerns. What if the new properties have to clear 30 feet from their homes into a park? Well, that's not going to be possible. Another problem we will have, which we're already seeing with development around the rest of Havenwood Park, and I should also mention that this section to the north of Havenwood Park is the only green space left bordering Havenwood Park. The rest is road or development. So we have encroachment issues. We have dumping issues. We have an increased impact in trails, trail use. Can Havenwood Park handle that much more of an impact? That's a question I think council should really look at. I don't know if it's what the impact percentage is. So trail use, access into the park, how would that be handled? Is that going to be handled with the Conservation Land Trust, Habitat Acquisition Trust, and TLC that hold the covenant? There are no trails in the management plan that allow access to the north there, so that would have to be considered right now. That would have to change in Havenwood Park's management plan. The Conservation Covenant terms do not allow for activities to occur that are not in the management plan without prior approval from all parties. And then another quite significant impact would be an obvious increase in invasive species. So with development, we already have a lot of Scotch broom problems, some other understory issues with daphne, and I can name a few, but I just want to make sure that everybody understands that the covenant changes some of the restrictions that are on a municipal park. Thank you for your time.
My name is Marcus Ooms. Marcus Ooms, I live at 3427 Mary Ann Crescent. I'm not really that concerned about houses being built in Callwood. I think it's a good thing in general. What I am concerned about on Mary Ann Crescent is traffic. I would echo Mr. Cormy's comments. I'm a little bit concerned at what looks like a strip of park bordering Area 3. It looks almost like it would potentially align nicely with Mary Ann Crescent and provide access for a large building that looks to be proposed up there. As it stands right now, Mary Ann Crescent can be quite a potential racetrack, and where we live, there's definitely sightline issues in the road. The road bends quite sharply, and there's a tree there. The road really doesn't look like it's safe quite often, just to back out. We're already anticipating Adrex developing up top, and, you know, everybody who's bought up there knew that going in, there were disclosures made and all of that. I never thought I'd see a six-story building go up there and potentially feed onto Mary Ann Crescent as well. I'm not an engineer. I don't know what is the norm, you know, or what that road can handle from an engineering perspective, but the road doesn't have a center line on it. You know, cars essentially down that corner take what I would call a racing line quite often. They, you know, they don't stay on their side of the road, and they can't see very well. There's lots of kids that play there. There's a three-way intersection up by the park, which, cars don't stop there, is my I can't see with higher volume on the road those types of things improving, and I would really like to have some clarity, I'll be asking staff later, but I'd like to have some clarity about where these cars are going to be going. As it stands right now, I really can't tell from what's out there, so I'd just like to register my concerns there. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Terry Lim. I'm at 501 Outlook, and I go down onto Delora. My concern, I like the development itself. I have no problem with the development. My concern is the movement of the heavy equipment that's going to go into the site and out of the site. On the publication in the paper, it showed dotted lines going off of Delora into the site. So I'm assuming, and that's the route that the trucks are going to use to go down to Delora, down to Mary Ann Crescent, up past the park, and down to the street, then up to Veterans Parkway, as opposed to going down Wishart. So I'm not sure where that's going to go, but I'm just voicing my concern about the fact, Delora is a narrow street, Mary Ann Crescent's a narrow street. There's no sidewalks on any of those streets. There's poor lighting. They're used by dog walkers, kids, bicycles, so sharing a road with a logging truck or a rock truck, or trailers being in, dump trucks, and you name it, is a concern for me. Thank you for your time.
And just to be clear, too, that staff will be here after the meeting, so after everybody has their opportunity to speak, please address your questions there, or anytime this week, staff will be available to answer those type of questions. Anyone else?
Jeff Crystal, 3484 Wishart Road. Yeah, a lot of good points have been raised, some of them true, some of them not. I would like to say, this is not Langford. We don't want condos here. We don't want a six-story building. I debated myself even coming here, because I can tell you guys have already made up your minds. This is going ahead, whether we talk about parks, or birds, or extinct species, or gary oak forests, or clearings, or whatever, you know, kids getting run over. It's going through, but I'll say my piece anyway. Just a show of hands, how many of you are seeking reelection this year?
Sorry, I'm not going to allow you to ask questions. Also, excuse me, I'm also not going to allow you to take shots at people, which you've just implied that this council has made a decision before it's come to us, and it hasn't. And so I would ask that you please be careful with your comments.
We don't need this tax revenue. With Callwood Corners getting underway, paying almost $1 million in back taxes, Royal Bay's 2,200-plus homes that are going in, we will meet or exceed our tax expectations for the next decade. So we don't need the amount of money that this development will provide us. I'm not against development, even though, you know, we border 40% of the property. We understand that single-family houses should totally be allowed there, but a six-story apartment building, we've all been down Carey Road, we know what that looks like, right? I don't know if you guys have been down there, but it's a big building, and having that eyesore on top of the mountain is going to bring down property values, it's going to cause more traffic, it's going to be a dilution of services. You know what? You guys have made up your mind. I'm not...
I'm Buddy DeVito, 3366 Wishart Road. Thank you, Chair. I've lived on Wishart for over 15 years. I've seen Royal Bay develop. Don't see a lot of problem. Seen Parkside go ahead, don't see a lot of problem. Yes, traffic has increased somewhat. I like this project for the simple fact that we can access it from different avenues and not impact Wishart as much as some other people might think it will do. I like the fact of all the green space, the parkland. I know for a fact that developed land brings in tax base, but sometimes we need that green space, too, that the property owner has agreed to and kind of likes it with the park trails and all of that. I don't really see a problem with this project. Like I say, I've been there for over 15 years, watching the traffic increase and go through. I don't have a problem, and I'd like to see it go through.
Bill Wishart, 3358 Wishart Road. Born and raised in this community, lived in this area here since 1957, and my parents have been here, and my grandparents long before. We've seen a lot of development around in this community coming along. I've seen the plans for this, and I like it. Lots of green space, lots of park. This area has grown so much in all the years that I've seen it, and my dad and everybody. This is a good development. We need development. We need taxes. We need, we need community living and affordable housing, not just Royal Bay. We have to spread it out a little bit here. I'm for this property development. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Darren Day. I have been proud to say I've lived in Callwood since I first got in real estate in 92. I live on top of Triangle Mountain, so I'm very aware of the whole mountain, and I remember the comments way back when, as geez, if you move up there, the water's not very good, and you'll never get up there in the wintertime, and even remember some, you got to wear chains. That scared some people. I don't know if those chain signs are still up there, but the point of the matter is, I never was stuck on Triangle Mountain, always got up, and Callwood made a great job of always making, you know, everything clear. As respect to the development, I think we need it, because, you know, I look, I've got a good view, and I see all this land that's been sitting there sort of undeveloped, that's sort of partially developed, so I think by approving this, which seems very responsible, I think it will allow the rest that's sort of been in the works to maybe get finished, because we've got the infrastructure out here, so I think we need to step forward. It seems like a responsible plan, lots of single-family, and I'm for the project, so thank you.
I'm going to give you guys another opportunity. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this, this before council today? This is your opportunity. I will just remind you that this is, public hearing is an opportunity for the public to share their thoughts, so this is your opportunity. I will put it out a second time. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this, this evening? Come on up.
Again, I'm Wendy Tyrell. Do I need to state? Okay. Okay. One thing I didn't talk about was the ecological value of Havenwood Park. So I'm just going to briefly, in case you aren't familiar with the park, it's protected for, it's protected for a reason. Havenwood Park has approximately 120 different ecological communities identified within the park. That includes gary oak habitat, that includes old-growth forest, that includes riparian and riparian features. It includes rare species and communities, and there's quite a lot of wildlife. In a recreational park that is also environmentally sound, it's an impressive place. It will change by this development, that is clear. So that's something to really think about. So that's something to really think about. And I think I want to stress again, at least along Havenwood Park, I can't see any reason why you can't pull the development north and create a buffer of green space that runs east to west. I mean, who doesn't want to look out over onto a park? So why run linear, narrow? The parks that are, that are proposed in this development, please don't think these are real parks. These are linear corridors. They will be a pathway into Havenwood Park or into someone else's neighborhood. So I just want to make that really clear.
So, again, giving an opportunity for anyone else to speak on this, this evening. Second time, I'm going to put it out there. Anyone else would like to speak on this? Third and final time, this is it. This is your last chance. Seeing none, I am going to close the public hearing for this and look, just for a motion to adjourn, I guess, or what do you need from here? Yeah, so, thank you. Moved, second. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried? Thank you. And staff are available to, to speak to you if you'd like to speak to them tonight or council.